Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the Reynoldsburg City Council meeting of March 14th, 2020, to order. The time is now 6:32 PM. At this time, we'll have the invocation. Please stand. It will be given by Master Mark Pelfrey of the Coalition Church. Following the invocation, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father in Heaven, we thank you for the day that you've given us. We thank you for the sunshine that we got to experience and feel today. God, we're thankful for everything that you've given us, and we're thankful for this great city that we all have the privilege of being able to be a part of. God, we thank you for our leaders of this city. We thank you for the first responders, and we pray for your protection upon them and guidance as well and wisdom. And we pray, God, for our city leaders, that you'll continue to lead them and guide them as well, give them wisdom to make decisions that are in the best interest of this city that we're all a part of. God, we pray that your blessings will be upon them and their families as well, and we pray, God, that your continued provision will be upon us, and you'll lead, guide, and direct us in all things. We ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Would the clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Cotner?
Here.
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Bryant?
Here.
Councilmember Strickland?
Present.
Councilmember Savadi?
Here.
Councilmember Packere?
Here.
Councilmember Lawson-Roe?
Here.
And President Jenkins?
Here.
Next, we have the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Saying none. The agenda is approved as amended. Approval of City Council Regular Meeting Minutes for February 28, 2022. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to these minutes?
Saying none.
The minutes stand approved as submitted. Next, we have our community comments. The community comments portion of the meeting is an opportunity for citizens to address council. Citizens may bring matters to the attention of the city council or discuss items on the agenda. Before addressing city council, members of the public are asked to complete a speaker's form and give it to the clerk. The council president will invite speakers to step to the microphone and give their name and their address. All remarks should be addressed to council as a whole and not exceed three minutes. Are there any comments from the community?
Yes, Madam President. Brett Luzater, and would anyone speaking, please speak into the mic so the Facebook listeners and our recording system pick up your comments. Thank you.
Thank you, President Jenkins, members of the council. First off, just let me tell you, if you hear me cough, that's not whatever. I'm safe. I've got a sinus infection, so. I'm here again tonight to address you as the Vice President of the Community Association. As you know, our spaghetti dinner was scheduled for February the 5th, but it had to be canceled when we got all the ice and the snow and everything else that weekend. So I would like to invite you to our newly rescheduled spaghetti dinner, which is now March 26th, be a week from this coming Saturday, still at the Messiah Lutheran Church on Wagner Road. It's all-you-can-eat spaghetti, and it is our only fundraiser that we have throughout the year to help us put on our events, the Fourth of July Parade, the Community Halloween Party, and Christmas on the Town. So, again, Chris, tickets are $8 for adults, $5 for kids under 12, and kids under 5 are free. And 5 to 8, we'd love to have you come out and join us, and hope to see you there. And I would say that I'd love to stay here and wait for your meeting to be over and sell you a ticket tonight, but today's my anniversary, and I'm going home to my wife.
You did say the 26th?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any other comments from the community? Are there any comments from council? Do we have any comments from Mayor Begany?
Yes, Madam President. Thank you. First off, I want to say congratulations and a great shout-out to the state champion girls' basketball team for Reynoldsburg. They will be embarrassed by all the things that are going to be said about them over the next couple of weeks. I had the opportunity to be at the recognition pep rally today at the Livingston campus, and it was great. The girls are ecstatic. I had a chance to talk with them before they went to Dayton last week with the police escort, and they were, let's just say you could tell that they were ready. They were ready. So we'll leave it at that. I did want to let you know that the invitation has been extended, and we hope to have them here at our next council meeting. I figured that you might want to say hello to them and whatever else comes their way. I also wanted to let everyone know that we will be having a citywide parade for the Raiders to recognize their state championship. It will be this Thursday. It will be starting at 6:00 PM, and it will follow the same parade route as the homecoming parade. So it'll start at the Livingston campus and going up to Rose Hill to Bartlett. It'll do a loop and then come back to Rose Hill. So those details are literally, like, I would say, two hours old at the most. So you're going to start seeing that on the school district page and everywhere on social media, and I encourage everyone, for the community, to come out and support our Lady Raiders as they bring that trophy around, and you can see the smiles on their faces. It was a great accomplishment. It's going to be a beautiful day, knock on my door, I think this temperature's going to be around the 70s on Thursday, unlike the last couple of days, so we've got that going for us. So mark your calendars, and like I said, as soon as I have any other specific information, I will let you know. Also, wanted to go ahead and do a little shameless plug for everybody who's out there. This is our community guide that just came out in the mail within the last week, so hopefully, most of you in the audience that live in Reynoldsburg have received this, have gotten some great feedback, but we're always welcome and eager to learn if there's anything else that's going on. You will see an online version as well coming up as soon as the internet works well enough for us for this particular thing. But there are a couple of things that I want to just kind of bring to everybody's attention. We are going to probably come back to council to discuss some additional funding for the translation purposes. We do have a certain amount, but we don't have enough currently right now to cover it, but we'll bring something to you so we can make sure that it is translated to very specific languages by a professional company, as opposed to, I know Councilman Packere, and I've had great conversations about the lack of Google Translate and how well that works, but we're going to have that taken care of, but we'll have something to you at the next council meeting. But it will be available in Nepali as well as Spanish and Somali, which are the three most spoken languages other than English here in the Reynoldsburg area. So we want to make sure that that is available for everyone as well. But if members of the community, if you didn't get one or you accidentally threw it away, which I hope you didn't, but just in case, we have plenty of them here. We will be distributing them to other locations. They'll be at the Senior Center. They'll be here. We'll have them available at some of our community events as well throughout the rest of the year, but it's a great resource that actually contains a comprehensive calendar of our major events. It's got a lot of great information, so when you have questions about what's going on in the city, you can refer to that, as opposed to Facebook. You can still go to Facebook, but this is just, gives you the quick answers on everything, anything from if a street light is out, all the way to if you have a questions about potholes, which tends to come up quite often this time of year. And with that, I will turn it back to you, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we have a presentation by the American Red Cross regarding emergency preparedness.
Good evening, President Jenkins and council members. My name is Karen Waschbusch. I'm the interim Executive Director for the Greater Columbus Chapter of the Red Cross. I thought about giving you a lot of stats about our chapter, but there's really two important things that I wanted to talk about, and I have a short amount of time because I'm going to turn it over to Atticus, who will talk about disaster preparedness. One is that we are facing a critical blood shortage. This is all across the country, not only our blood collection through the Red Cross, but all blood collection agencies. We've never used this verbiage before in the last decade, that it is a critical shortage. We're also affected by a shortage in employment, so it's kind of a double whammy. And so we are asking people to go on our website, look for a time that you can donate blood, make an appointment, keep your appointment, and if you, for some reason, cannot keep it, please cancel your appointment so somebody else can take that. We are just in a very precarious situation right now. Doctors, surgeons are making the difficult decision who gets blood and who does not get blood. It's that critical, so I do ask that you consider donating and passing the word to other people. Do you want to pass out the?
Yeah. I will admit, I miscounted off the website, so I have six of these. Some of you will have to share, but I'm sure that you have all of them electronically.
And you have extra flyers, correct? Okay. So the other thing I want to talk about is our Health and Equity Project. This is a brand-new project. We have discontinued all special events so that we can focus on the critical needs in our communities. We are going into vulnerable communities every night responding to home fires. We looked at our home fire map. We worked with fire departments, looked at where the fires are happening, overlaid that with data that we received from the Kerwin Institute at Ohio State, and it exactly mirrors where the home fires predominantly are, down 71 and then out on the southern area of Greater Columbus, west side and east side. So knowing this, we're in these homes every night. We're seeing that there is a disparity in home safety as well as health care. So we have started the Health and Equity Project. We are going to have three block parties. We are going to have the first one, May 14th, in Franklinton at Dodge Park. June 11th, these next two dates are temporary because we're hearing that there's some conflicting activities, but in June, around the 11th, we want to have a second one on the far east side. And then the third one, around August 13th, would be on the near east side, kind of the Pine Dexter area of town. We have partners, we have COSI joining, well, first I should tell you, our objective is to provide lifesaving trainings, diversify our blood supply. We will have blood drives at these events. It's very critical that we have a diverse blood supply. People that are receiving multiple transfusions for cancer, sickle cell disease, their bodies start rejecting the blood, and so the closer match that we can get, the better it is for that patient. We'll do health education, we'll have health screenings, and volunteer recruitment. And our partners are COSI. They're going to be passing out science kits to the kids on health. Central Ohio Primary Care, they will be providing health education, the importance of having a physician, and kind of walk through what it's like to go to the doctor. There's a lot of fear of going to a doctor, so they'll do kind of a simulation. Franklin County Public Health will be there to provide COVID vaccines, as well as they want to interview the attendees and collect data and find out what do the individuals in the community see as their needs. We can speculate, but we want to talk to the attendees and find out. Jack and Jill of America, they are going to teach water safety training. Jobs and Family Services, they'll have their stabilization unit there, and will provide an opportunity for people that qualify to sign up for Medicaid. Local Matters, they're going to help people identify where there's affordable fresh food. We have all three, all four hospitals. We have Mount Carmel. They will be focusing on behavioral health and anxiety, which has skyrocketed during COVID. Nationwide Children's, focusing on the whole child. Ohio State University will have their SNAP Ed program. They'll do healthy food tastings and provide access to affordable, healthy food. And Ohio, or I'm sorry, Ohio Health just signed on, so I'm not sure exactly what they plan to do. We have the Urban League just joined us, and we have a couple other health care agencies that will join us. And then 10%, there's also a fundraiser attached to this at COSI, an evening event, and 10% of the proceeds will go to five grassroots charities that are working in these neighborhoods. So I know I throw a lot at you. There's a flyer in your packet, and feel free to call me if you have questions or would like more information.
Sure. Well, good evening, Madam President, council members, mayor. Pleasure to be here this evening. My name is Atticus Garden. I serve as the Disaster Program Manager for the American Red Cross Greater Columbus Chapter. I'll make this brief, just take a few minutes. While our executive director and interim executive director, Karen, our current executive director, is out on maternity leave, he'll be returning in about a month, works to really bridge our various lines of service throughout the Greater Columbus Chapter, which encompasses the counties of Franklin County, Union County, and Delaware County, and is a part of the central and southern Ohio region of the American Red Cross, which is 47 counties and covers just over 6 million people. As the Disaster Program Manager, I have the great honor of managing disaster cycle services, which encompasses preparation, response, and recovery of all disaster operations for the American Red Cross. And as many of you may be aware, the American Red Cross is considered the subject matter experts on mass care or what's referred to as the ESF-6. So we coordinate with our various emergency management, homeland security offices, in addition to our public health institutions and other various partners throughout our geographical area. And so Lauren Frolic, who serves as our Disaster Program Specialist, who poached a few months ago on the outskirts of Chicago, who graduated in public health, has joined us here in Columbus and just moved here more recently. She and I work to support our workforce of about 217 volunteers. For us, it's about quality, not about quantity. Certainly, we have a little bit of rebuilding to do as we see many restrictions lifted from the pandemic, but overall, we're in a really good place. I've included much of the information in your packets, and certainly, I'll make sure that each of you gets this information electronically as well, so that you can distribute it as you see fit. And certainly, we'll ensure that you have my contact information if you'd like to follow up with me. But, so I won't touch as much on preparation as much of that information is found in those packets, but certainly for the purpose of being that we've got residents of the city here, certainly want to touch on it real quick. We have a number of really remarkable programs of the American Red Cross that can be of service to those within your community, particularly on the preparation side. As Karen mentioned, we do see a number of runs here in the Reynoldsburg area, Whitehall Reynoldsburg area, and is a high-risk area when it comes to home fires. Home fires are the number-one disaster in the United States, therefore, they're the number-one disaster that the American Red Cross responds to. And we have certainly seen an uptick in the last 12 months of home fires, both single-family fires and multifamily fires as well. So I am really excited to let you know that we are in ongoing conversations with the Truro Township Fire Department, which I understand covers the vast majority of the city of Reynoldsburg. And what's very exciting about that is we're finalizing a MOU with the department, really sort of determining what that partnership looks like and what services that we can provide to that department, which includes free smoke alarms at no charge to the department, which certainly saves the taxpayers some money and allows them essentially a unlimited surplus of smoke alarms to get out to the community. In addition to that, we're looking at partnering with community canvassing events, where we'll actually go out, Red Cross volunteers who are specialized and trained in home fire safety and smoke alarm installation, and we'll go out with the fire department firefighters, and we'll go cold-knock doors in the neighborhood. It's actually a ton of fun, by all means, when we choose our next date. I encourage any of you to join us, and you'd be surprised at the amount of people who open up their door for us, and we'll go in, inspect their smoke alarms, install and replace any that need to. We also have youth preparedness. I'm not sure if there's an education chair on your council. Certainly, if you've got connections to Reynoldsburg City School Board as well, we can go in and conduct youth presentations, K through 5. We've got Prepare Pedro, which is a little penguin that teaches the kids about youth emergency preparedness. That's K through first grade, and then we have our Pillow Case Project, which is second grade through fifth grade. Anything older, we can conduct a Be Red Cross Ready presentation, which is a little bit more advanced, but we can tailor it based off of the needs of the school or the organization, faith-based organizations, nonprofits, things of that nature. And then we do have a hotline. I know that was of a great interest to ensure that council members had that hotline. That hotline can be distributed to the community, and it's not simply specific to the Greater Columbus Chapter, it's specific to our whole region, and individuals can contact that hotline to schedule an appointment-based installation of a smoke alarm if they need to do that. And then, very briefly, just want to touch on the response side. We have our disaster action teams, who are out in the community every single day responding to disasters. Fortunately, we've got a really wonderful partnership with the Franklin County 911 Dispatch Centers, of which, for the fire departments, there are two. So when a home fire occurs within our geographical area, their dispatchers will contact our national hotline, which will automatically dispatch one of our disaster action teams, who will actually physically go to that disaster, more often than not, a home fire, and provide immediate support to that household. That includes financial assistance, immediate financial assistance to determine that those individuals in that household are able to get immediate shelter. It also includes health services, so we can help them get their prescription drugs replaced, provide them additional supplemental support to pay for those prescriptions. We can help them get new wheelchairs, other medical devices. We also provide mental health support and can provide additional supplemental support for those to seek mental health care, as we know that disasters and home fires can be very traumatic for individuals in our communities, as well as spiritual care. And so, and they can also provide supplemental if an individual has lost a religious book or prayer beads or a sash. We can assist them in getting those things replaced as well. In addition to, and God forbid, fatality fires, we can provide additional support for funeral expenses as well. So, and then they also get a caseworker assigned to them, so they can provide referrals to various agencies. So we really are full circle, preparation, response, and recovery. I really highly encourage you to review some of those documents as you see fit. Again, happy to come before you anytime and discuss some of those, but I appreciate the opportunity to be here with you this evening, and yeah, thank you. Any immediate questions? Yeah?
Thank you, Mr. Atticus, for doing that overview, and also, thank you, Ms. Karen, also. So you talked about the uptick of this area here. Do you have anything specific to Reynoldsburg, you know, the 43068, on how many fires have occurred here, or you have assisted here in this particular area?
Yeah, certainly, as far as the amount of fires, I would defer to the Truro Township Fire Department. They would have the specific numbers. As far as our responses from the American Red Cross, we can get you that information. I don't have it in front of you. I can tell you, and I go to the Franklin County Fire Chief meetings every month, and I sit around with the fire chiefs or whomever they've delegated that task to, to be present at that meeting, and we've discussed the reason why we've seen a bit of an uptick. And it can be, you know, up and down, particularly, though, we have seen an increase in multifamily apartment fires. I suspect, unfortunately, it's sort of the perfect storm in that with the rising, the housing market, rising rental costs, more people are cramming into units that were not intended for that amount of people. In addition to that, during the pandemic, certainly skilled labor has been more challenging to find, materials are more expensive, so individuals are looking to cut corners where they can and save some money, which, you know, renters and homeowners. And so the reality is, is that, you know, homes may not be set up, you know, in a way that they, you know, or should be. And with more people in the household, it makes it more challenging for folks to get out of the homes faster, more people cooking, things of that nature. So it's sort of a, sort of a perfect storm.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman Lawson-Roe?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Ms. Karen and Mr. Atticus, for sharing this evening. I'd like to share with you that here in Reynoldsburg, we celebrate Juneteenth, and we are in the midst of planning our event, which will be Saturday, June 18th, and I'd love to talk to you in more detail offline, to invite you to participate in Reynoldsburg Juneteenth, because this information is very important, and one thing that the committee and I are really keen on is making sure that residents know about county services, America Red Cross, all the services that you provide for the community, and I'd like to have that highlighted during Juneteenth, if possible. Is your information included here where I can contact you?
Yeah, and also, yeah, and we can get it for you as well, but it is in that packet as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Do we have any other questions?
Yeah, I have one question.
Yes.
Thank you, Atticus, and thank you, Karen. So, one information for all the community member, we are doing smoke detector things on April 16th, I believe, or no?
Second.
April 2nd. Okay, April 2nd. Yeah, that is our, we have planned the event, so if anybody wants, like, we will be in, we're at this volunteers will come to the community, and they can go and change the smoke detector if it's not working. So that's for all of us to know about it. And Karen, I have a question for you. In terms of this blood shortage, you mentioned that this has never happened in the past, at least for a decade or so. Why do you think it's that, right now, it's pandemic, or any other things, or you don't know the answer?
The blood crisis?
Yeah, blood shortage in the Red Cross. I mean.
Well, a big, a big reason is that a lot of our blood, 25% of our blood, comes from high school and college students, and with COVID and kids being at home, they were not holding blood drives. And then continuing, so many companies have not reinstated their blood drives because so many people are working from home. They're still working from home, or they're doing a hybrid, so they have not resumed their blood drives. We hope that changes in the near future, but for now, you know, we're facing this situation. You said April 2nd? So for the neighborhoods that we might not reach or other people that have a need, we do have a toll-free number where you can call if you do need new smoke alarms. If they're more than 10 years old, they need to be replaced. And we also, my dad is 92 years old. He can't get up on a ladder. Fortunately, his family is in town, but a lot of people don't have family or friends in town. We'll go out and we'll even change the batteries in the smoke alarms, so we'll provide the 1-800 number for you.
Yeah, you've got it in there, and then, you know, if you want to push that out, we'll be here April 2nd from 9 to 1 in the city of Reynoldsburg. Appointment-based installations, we won't be doing, we won't be doing door knocking, but we've made Truro Township aware that we'll be present out in the city, so folks can call that number, you know, from now until then, and one of our volunteers with our home fires, they'll all back out and figure out what exact time works best for them. And certainly, if April 2nd doesn't work, they'll find a time to schedule that that does work for them.
Mayor Begany?
Just wanted to add real quick, we actually have our next blood drive right next door at the Reynoldsburg Police Department. My appointment's at 1:30, but I do believe that there's still a few others out there, so always a good thing, and it's like clockwork. Every, every time that they can, they're right there.
I'll give you my pin.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you all the work that y'all do.
Do we have any other additional communications? At this time, we have a motion to approve a resolution recognizing Women's History Month. Councilmember Lawson-Roe, would you please read the resolution?
Thank you, Madam President. It's an honor and great privilege that I share with you a resolution recognizing Women's History Month, but before I offer the resolution, I'd like to personally highlight the numerous, nameless, and faceless women and our families and communities. Oftentimes, we celebrate our, excuse me, oftentimes, we celebrate and recognize the nationally or internationally known women who are famous. Today, I invite all of you to think about and in some way elevate and amplify the women in your world who were and are leaders. So allow me this opportunity. Today, I elevate- Today, I elevate the 2021 and 22 Division One Girls' Basketball State Champs, the Reynoldsburg Lady Raiders. And notice, I have my Raider pride on today. Today, I amplify the women in the community that support our schools and community. Today, I celebrate the women leaders I watched growing up. My grandmother, who we affectionately called Grandmami, was a business owner and later a real estate agent. I celebrate my mom, Ruth Lawson, who was the first woman, and black woman, to serve as chief probation officer at juvenile court in Clark County. And I lift up one of my favorite great aunts who made lemonade out of lemons. Her name was Castella Shropshire. We affectionately called her Aunt Caca. And when she was in high school, her guidance counselor told her that she did not need to take too many science or math classes, and that she should take home economics classes instead. And then rather than lament as an adult, she became one of the most sought-after small businesses in my hometown for all seamless related business. And finally, I celebrate all the women retail workers I watched growing up. And one of them is my cousin Debbie Woods. I loved visiting local retail department stores as a kid. And my favorite Aunt Barbara worked at a department store called Hertz. And my cousin Debbie, who I thought was a supermodel, worked at Sears. So without further ado, a resolution recognizing Women's History Month. Whereas, American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. Whereas, throughout our history, despite hardship, exclusion, and discrimination, women have strived and sacrificed for equity and equality in communities across the country. Generations of Native American women were stewards of the land and continue to lead the fight for climate justice. Black women fought valiantly to end slavery, advocate for civil rights, and passed the Voting Rights Act. Black, white, and immigrant suffragists helped pass the 19th Amendment to the Constitution so that no American could be denied a vote on the basis of sex. And whereas, American women are particularly important in the establishment of charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in providing the majority of volunteer labor force in the nation and courageously serving in the military. And whereas, Reynoldsburg has countless examples of women who have made a difference in the community as business owners, community advocates, stellar servants in public and private sectors. These women, and include Joanne Davison, who served on city council and as Speaker of the Ohio House, and a plethora of nameless women who served, worked, held down two full-time jobs, one as a wage earner, and one ensuring that the daily needs of her children and family are met. Whereas, in the early 1900s, as villages grew into cities, female residents addressed the need for civic improvements by establishing clubs known as women's clubs. Reynoldsburg has an example of one of those organizations in the Reynoldsburg Civic Club. The Civic Club provided civic improvements to the city since 1922, including a lending library, kindergarten, PTAs, billboards welcoming visitors, and recently supported the fire safety house, utility pole banners, and the mural on the building at the corner of Lancaster and Main Streets. The Civic Clubs and those like them also nurtured the confidence and resolve of the members, enabling them to imagine new opportunities to pursue and accomplish. The collective engagement of these club women has resulted in immeasurable economic impact on the city of Reynoldsburg. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of Reynoldsburg, that we do hereby proclaim March 2022 Women's History Month. In observance of Women's Histories Month and International Women's Day on March 8th, we encourage Reynoldsburg residents to recognize our local women for their often overlooked and undervalued accomplishments to the building and support of community. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council? May I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So move.
Councilmember Lawson-Roe, is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Strickland, is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. There's also a presentation that Councilmember Lawson-Roe, would you please introduce our guests this evening?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. May I have the Reynoldsburg Civic Club to come forward? And immediately following, we will have Ms. Melinda Carter from the Columbus Urban League. Thank you.
Going to tell you a little bit about the Civic Club. As Reynoldsburg grew from a village to a city, there was always a need for civic improvements. These are generally carried out within the realm of the male population. However, in November of 1922, Jessie Wyberg, a woman of action and decision, called together a representative group of women from Reynoldsburg and the vicinity. Thus, the Reynoldsburg Civic Club was born and has been a vital force in the community for now 100 years. As we look back at our history, we learn that the Civic Club instituted many firsts. Among them, in order of their happening, are a lending library, kindergarten, tourist camp, traffic light, preschool, a clinic with a nurse and a doctor in charge, the erection of large billboards, and in each town proclaiming welcome to Reynoldsburg, and the PTA in our school. In 1922, our club motto, "These Things We Will Do," was coined. In all probability, those forward-looking women were always asked, "Why?" And they probably answered, "Why not? Let us continue the legacy begun long ago by Jessie Wyberg and her friends." And now I'd like to share with you some of the ways that we have donated money to areas in Reynoldsburg. Since the year 2000, we've donated over $37,000. One of them was the Fish Star Assignment, and this is in, works with the Reynoldsburg Police to find out people that need help. The Historical Society, this year, we are doing two $1,000 scholarships to each of our high schools. The Hart Food Pantry, the Helping Hands Food Pantry, the Livingston House, Life Center Adult Daycare, Band Boosters, Tomato Festival, and Honor Flight. Thank you.
I will let you know, our meetings are always the first Thursday of the month. We meet at the Community Center at the Reynoldsburg Methodist Church for lunch, and we always have a speaker or some type of enlightening program. We're open to anyone who would like to join our organization and work with us to make Reynoldsburg an even better place than it is now.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, it's the first Tuesday, not the first Thursday. I also have a meeting on the first Thursday, so...
Good morning, I need to, I gotta do that. Good evening, Mayor Jenkins, members of council, mayor. Everyone, congratulations on, we stand in support of the resolution submitted by Councilwoman Lawson-Roe. Very much appreciative of that recognition for all women who work so diligently in our community to make a difference. One thing, my name again is Melinda Carter, and I am serving as the Senior Vice President of the Columbus Urban League. Want to express well wishes from our President Stephanie Hightower, who couldn't be here tonight. President Hightower has a meeting that was already scheduled, and it's raising money. She does it very well, so we couldn't miss that. So, but she did want to send her congratulations to Councilwoman Roe and to say that she certainly supports women. With History's Proclamation, and it's hard to amplify, as she said, and to encourage women across our central Ohio to do good work. One thing that Councilwoman Roe, she talked about the Castella Shropshire, who's also my grandmother, and Mrs. Hume, if you didn't know her name, was Mrs. Hume, the counselor, that had her change her schedule to indicate that she wanted to take domestic courses that were in line with that. And I use it often, and I have a speech that deals with it often. But what's so ironic is my mother graduated from the same high school some 20, 30 years later, 20 years later, however, 19, whatever, I won't go to that. But at any rate, Mrs. Hume did the same thing to her, and took my mother's schedule and said, "Oh, Mildred," that was her name, "why do you need this class? You take this, you know, you don't need typing, you don't need this, you need that." So she changed it. And my mother, being a renegade like myself, found another white woman and changed her schedule to match that, and nobody ever knew the difference. And I love that story, but what's so ironic, when I served with the governor, I had given this speech often, somebody came up to me after and said, it was a white woman, said, "Her mother also went to Springfield South High, at that time Springfield High, and Miss Hume had done the same thing to her." So women, irrespective of race, certainly suffer from people's prejudiced notions of what we could do. So, thank you, Meredith, for raising that story. But I always want to say, there are Mrs. Humes in all sorts of ways. We have to be very, it's very important that we call that out, because that does happen. It limits the choices and opportunities for us, which limits the impact that they'll have on the community. So thank you. Again, I'm glad to, we're here to recognize, she has all these other wonderful women with me too, to recognize Women's History Month. But also, I wanted to say, I'm very blessed to have a family of long history of entrepreneurship. But the reason why that's so important, I know this in the work that I do, is because these women represent countless numbers of economic, amounts of economic impact, be it the children they raised, the colleges that they help pay for, and the people that go and do great things as a result of their tenacity, be entrepreneurs. And entrepreneurs always say, "Don't rise from the dust." They usually come from doing work at a good place that encourages them and gives them confidence enough to know that they can go on their own. So the impact of women history is felt in our economic corridors, in our philanthropic and civic organizations, and the better health mental, and all the things that are important in raising good, healthy children and people. So I wanted to congratulate you on that, Councilwoman Roe. Also, I'm also standing here, and I thought he would be here. I think we had a crazy day, there's a lot going on with Columbus Urban League and the work that we do. But we really, I thought Jessie Marks was gonna, Jessie Mark was gonna be here today, who is our Minority Business Assistance Center Director. And we are the, we're in our third iteration of a two-year award, two-year award three times, this is our fifth year, for our Minority Business Assistance Center. We serve minority business owners for the state of Ohio for certification, entrepreneurship, I mean, procurement opportunities across the state. We represent 14 counties, provide services to 14 counties that have a satellite in Athens. And those counties include the counties that Reynoldsburg is located in. We offer, over the last five years, we've done over $70,000 hours in counseling to minority women in small businesses and veteran-owned businesses, and we'll continue to do that. So we want to make sure that the citizens of Reynoldsburg utilize our services and understand how important they are for businesses who need help there free of charge. It's your state dollars at work. We also have support from the county, from the city. During the pandemic, we were able to issue $3 million in grant dollars. That's not payback dollars to minority businesses to keep them sustained, because we recognize the value of minority businesses and how important they are to stay afloat. And so, we were able to do that. We also were able to assist over 50 businesses, close to 50 businesses, to secure PPP dollars so they could be sustained during the course of the year. So, we understand, appreciate, and applaud the work that Reynoldsburg is doing, but I'd like to see even more minority women in small businesses do work out here who are owned by women. And so, Women's Business Assistance is an appropriate place to celebrate that. Again, I come from a long legacy, including the people she met, and my cousin Patty Young, who owns the largest minority-owned business, women-owned business, well, I shouldn't say minority-owned business, but it's also women-owned business in Springfield. Hair salon that also specializes in hair replacement and has copyrighted some issues, some hair weave replacements, so very, we're very, very proud of Patty. I take her, I carry her with me everywhere I go to. But at any rate, and of course Debbie, our supermodel. Kelly, she gets it. But at any rate, I just want to applaud your work. I want to say that our Minority Business Center is here to assist businesses in Reynoldsburg. On the Urban League, we serve, under President Hightower's leadership, we've served amazing number of people during the COVID crisis, and amazing number of businesses. We have something called Miss Bree, which is the minority, which is assisting women owned businesses to get their footing. We have something called Incubate Her, that's funded by Goldman Sachs, we wrote a grant a couple of years ago that's been phenomenal. We understand the importance of women in our community and in our lives and making it better. We understand the economic impact. We understand why they're important. We understand why we've got to be committed to their growth and development, and we do. So, as you proceed with your plans to recognize women, as you proceed with your intent and effort to make sure that women businesses participate fully in the economic ecosystem of Reynoldsburg, please look at the Columbus Urban League, our Minority Business Center, which deals with women, over 50% of our clients are women, and also with our Miss B programs and other plethora of businesses, of services that we provide to make our community strong. Please look to us to work with you in any way we can. And again, congratulations to Councilwoman Roe, congratulations to all the great entrepreneurs that made it possible for me to stand here today. And anything I can do to be a service, you can be a service. President Hightower is committed to do that for the entire central Ohio area, and of course, that includes Reynoldsburg as well. I guess I got everything. Thank you. You want to introduce yourself?
Thank you.
Patty Young, the owner of Young Hair Incorporated in Springfield, Ohio. I'm Deborah Woods. I am Patty's sister, and I am the receptionist at her beauty shop.
And I'm Kelly Bray, I'm Patty's daughter, and I'm a Columbus resident, and I work at the Ohio State Bar Association.
Thank you.
And we are all relatives. And we are all relatives. Thank you, Madam President. I did want to share that some time ago Patty's shop was mentioned during an address that President Biden shared regarding COVID vaccines. And so, I can share that, but look up Young Hair, Patty Young in Springfield, Ohio. She was recognized by the President in her leadership in offering appointments for COVID vaccines in Clark County.
Thank you. And thank you for your service, that, to offer that is really good for the neighborhood in your area. So I recognize that. Do we have any other questions or comments? Yes, Councilman Baker?
I just want to say thank you for coming tonight. And for note, I have a lot of family that's from Springfield. And when you said Springfield South, my mom, my aunt, my uncle went to Springfield South. And my great uncle, Robert C. Henry. Yeah, my great uncle. Okay, well, we'll talk afterwards. But I just want to say thank you, and I'm glad to have you all here.
Next, we have our reports, Development, Parks and Recreation Committee, Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Madam President. This is the Development, Park and Recreation Committee meeting for March 14, 2022. Members in attendance are Councilmember Cotner, Councilmember Lawson Row, Councilmember Packerell, myself, and you, Madam President. There's only one item on the agenda for the committee tonight. It's an ordinance to amend Chapter 11 Planning and Zoning Code for the City of Reynoldsburg. City Attorney Shook or Director Myers, which is not here, so it's City Attorney Shook. Would you like to speak?
The Director Myers is a new father, and I've asked him to be at the Charter Review Commission on Wednesday night instead of tonight, so I'll speak on the zoning code. These are updated changes. You know, we have a new development director and a new planning and zoning administrator who are getting used to the zoning code and had a chance to take a look at it and suggest some changes, though certainly not potentially all the changes that they want to see at this time, but changes that they thought were appropriate for this spring. These changes include the zoning process for annexation, to allow council to designate the zoning district of a property that is brought into the city by annexation, to change the procedures for rezoning parcels. We wanted to make it more in line textually with the city charter, and also to ensure that we had a more clear and coherent process for advising residents of applications for zoning changes. So whereas before, we were not required to post on the property, public hearing for zoning changes, now with this change, we would have to post on the property for public hearing changes. That is not something that's required by the charter, but it's something that we felt, at least in the aftermath of what happened with the mobile home park, that would be appropriate going forward. In addition, we've added a definition for accessory dwelling unit, and more standards for where an ADU will be allowed in residential districts. We have provided updating definitions for overnight lodging in hotels to remove extended stay from that definition. We wanted to make it more in line with temporary stay hotels, so that extended stay hotels would not be part of that definition. And we have also provided a definition for structured parking, which is something that could come up in the future, and standards for structured parking in our zoning code. So those are the changes that we have presented at this time. Would ask that it be moved forward for a first read, and then referred to Planning Commission for their public hearing.
Okay. Is there any comments or questions from the committee, from Mr. Shook? Any from council? Okay. Seeing none, are there, I make the motion that we forward this ordinance to council for its first reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Packerell, and is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed? Eyes have it, this ordinance will be forwarded on council for its first reading. As there is no further business for the Development, Park and Recreation Committee meeting, I return this back over to you, Madam President.
Thank you. Public Safety Law and Courts Committee, Councilmember Bryant.
Thank you, President Jenkins. This is the Public Safety Law and Courts Committee meeting for March 14, 2022. Members in attendance are Councilmember Cotner, Councilmember Packerell, Councilmember Lawson Row, myself, and President Jenkins. First item is an ordinance establishing Section 701.07 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Reynoldsburg, commonly referred to as the Pay-to-Stay Ordinance. This ordinance is being returned to committee to amend language. Attorney Shook.
Yes, thank you, Chair Bryant. This is being represented to committee to request an amendment to the language that was previously submitted to council. Both Council President Jenkins and I had an opportunity to have a conversation with the attorney for the Columbus Apartment Association on Friday, so that he could express his concerns about the ordinance. And while we aren't addressing all of the concerns that were presented in that meeting, we did feel it was a fair compromise to make certain changes that, in our opinion, would lessen the likelihood that the city would be subject to litigation for this particular ordinance.
All right. So are there any questions or comments from the committee on this legislation?
What were the changes? Can you just highlight those for everyone? Yes, so we took out the specific language that talked about what fees would need to be paid by a tenant before an eviction could be granted by the court. The Apartment Association has requested that we structure that language to state reasonable costs and allow a court to determine what cost would or would not be reasonable under those circumstances. In addition, we have increased the amount of the late fee that could potentially be charged by a landlord. The concern that was raised by the attorney for the Columbus Apartment Association is that, as we've talked about before, ordinarily, they will not evict a person for being one day late in rent. But they do like having escalated late fees that would motivate a tenant to pay their rent and their late fees earlier. So we have now increased that cap to 15% of the monthly rent to account for that structured late fee payment that might be submitted or required by a landlord.
Counselor, I'm looking at the drafted amended language, and in subsection E at the end, the 15% is reflected, but in the language, it's actually still saying 10.
It should say 15. Originally, my thought process was to push back even harder against the Columbus Apartment Association and say 10%. But after further consideration, thought better of it. You know, in our opinion, it is important to have good partners in the community. We work with the same attorney when it comes to code violations in the community, and we try, you know, not to accommodate them on everything, because we do have to push back on certain things, but we try to be as reasonable as possible.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the committee on this legislation? From council? I move that we amend this legislation to approve the recommended changes proposed by Attorney Shook. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Lawson Row. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, the ordinance is amended. I move that we forward this ordinance as amended to council for a second reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Packerell. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, this ordinance will be forwarded to council for a second reading. Second item on tonight's agenda is an ordinance authorizing the city auditor to remove equipment from the city's fixed asset list for the Reynoldsburg Police Department.
Good evening, Chair Bryant, members of the committee. This is an ordinance to remove fixed assets. The items are three desktop computers. The computers were recycled out as part of our replacement plan for desktop computers. The hard drives would be destroyed, and the shells would be disposed of by our IT contractor.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the committee on this legislation? From council? I move that we forward this ordinance to council for a first reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Packerell. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, this ordinance will be forwarded to council for a first reading. Third item on tonight's agenda is an ordinance appropriating funds from the Unappropriate General Fund to the Police Department for donated monies.
Yes, ma'am, these were funds that were donated to our K-9 program, and they were left over from 2021.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the committee on this legislation? Council? I move that we forward this ordinance to council for a first reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Lawson Row. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, this ordinance will be forwarded to council for a first reading. As there is no further business, before the Public Safety Law and Courts Committee, I return the meeting to President Jenkins.
Thank you. Next, we have Public Service and Transportation Committee, Councilmember Strickland.
Thank you, Madam President. This is the Public Service and Transportation Committee meeting for March 14, 2022. Members in attendance are Councilmember Cotner, Councilmember Lawson Row, Councilmember Packerell, myself, and President Jenkins. Item number one, in order to approve payment of services performed in prior year and declaring an emergency, Director Dorman.
Yes, so this is a ordinance to clean up a little financial issue we had last year. We, late last year, we paid a vendor that we use for our water remote meter reading system. We received an invoice from the vendor, and the body of the invoice was another vendor who we paid. They have since refunded the money. However, given that was a PO from last year, we need to reappropriate the money this year and pay the correct vendor. We did ask them if they could just essentially pass the money through to the other vendor, but unfortunately, they're not able to do that. So, not new money, just money was returned to last year's account, back to the general fund in the Water Department, and now we're just going to use the money to pay the correct vendor.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the committee on this legislation? From council? I move we forward this ordinance to council for a single read and emergency approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Lawson Row. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, this ordinance will be forwarded to council for a single read and emergency approval. Item number two, in order to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract for 2022 fireworks display, waive competitive bidding, and declaring an emergency. This ordinance is being requested as a two-read emergency. Director Dorman.
Yes, so this is the annual contract we enter with Pyrotechnico, that's the company we use every year for the fireworks display. City's been very pleased with them for the past many years. They do lots of events, actually, other communities around the area. But obviously, we need to book them to secure our date. The reason for this, clerk of council, and I spoke, you know, this is something typically passed in the beginning of the year. However, with, as we've heard tonight, with the economy and things and prices of things being the way they are, they were a little late in getting out their proposal this year. So unfortunately, we're just now getting to it and presenting it to you guys for review.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the committee on this legislation? From council? I move we forward this ordinance to council for a first reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Lawson Row. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, this ordinance will be forwarded to council for a first reading approval. Item number three, in order, ordinance authorizing MHT to conduct design, engineering, and bidding services for the Police Department West Parking Lot Lighting Services, appropriating funds, therefore, and declaring an emergency. This ordinance is being requested as a two-read emergency. Director Dorman.
Yes, so last year, when the city received the Recoveries Act funds, the American Recoveries Act funds, we used that for two projects that I'm working on. One is the cemetery improvements up the street on Wagner Road, and the other one was for the improvements of the police parking lot behind City Hall here. Chief and I insist to our deputy chief and our engineering firm and Parks and Recreation and Service Department have been working on this together. The idea is that we are going to build a carport, if you remember, that would basically allow all the cruisers to be parked underneath that, so during inclement weather, they don't have to go out and scrape the cruisers or, you know, get wet while they're bringing things in and out of the building. Part of that was also expanding the parking lot, so we're going to be expanding the parking lot to the north, which would be a little bit of green space, kind of between here and the JFK parking areas. That allows to get, I think roughly about maybe somewhere between 10 and 20 extra spaces. That'll allow for a future growth of the PD and also allow all the employees to be parked back there. And the other major addition would be a security gate around the entire thing with proximity readers, so they could get in the gates without getting out of their vehicles. Once they get close, it'll read that, the gates will open, they can go in, and then the gates will close. In doing the design with the expansion of the parking lot, our goal was to try and use the existing streetlights that we had there, the parking lot lights. Unfortunately, the product that we have there is not available anymore, so when we wanted to find replacement parts, it's just not going to work. So, this money is for additional funds, just to finish the electrical plans for that, which we will be bidding probably in the next month or so.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? From council? I move we forward this ordinance to council for a first reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Packerell. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, this ordinance will be forwarded to council for a first reading approval. Item number four, in order to amend ordinance 142.02021 regarding Chapter 953, Water Charges, Section 953.01, Water Rate Schedule of the Code of Ordinance for the City of Reynoldsburg and Declaring an Emergency. This ordinance is being requested as a single-read emergency. Director Dorman.
Yes, this is another cleanup ordinance. I'm sorry, my throat's a little scratchy tonight. Basically, I'm talking to my Water Department clerk of council, and looking at this ordinance, there was a little ambiguity as to how it read. I think we have a, as you know, we implemented a senior discount for 10,000 gallons for a senior household. I think the way the ordinance was originally written, there were some questions on is that up to 10,000 gallons a year? It's not, it's per quarter. So we just wanted to clarify that. And so basically, it's if you're a senior citizen, you get a 10% discount up to 10,000 gallons per quarter. And we've added that language in there to reference the quarter as opposed to leaving it a little silent there, so.
Thank you, Director Dorman. So how are our senior citizens being notified regarding the discount itself?
So, we've done some communication, I think, on our connects and other things like that. However, anyone that was already on the City of Reynoldsburg Senior Discount for Trash, we just rolled them over to the water. They didn't have to call in. So they're already getting that discount applied to their bills.
What about the new senior citizens that's moving to Reynoldsburg? So what about that?
Yeah, we want to talk about that. It's a good, good point. I mean, typically, when you come into the city and you set up an account, we let you know that that's available. But it's, it's something that typically word of mouth actually travels pretty good with that group, so we usually get, you know, pretty, pretty good reads from just the community out there expressing that. But like I said, the good thing is we already had a database for everyone in the trash. So we were in, because the billing's done through the same department, they were able to apply that. We have already applied that moving forward. Like I said, this is more of a, just a grammatical thing in the ordinance that we're cleaning up, so.
Thank you. Mayor?
Yeah, I had the opportunity to speak at the senior center last week, and they were all very well aware of it. They have a much more efficient method of communication than anyone else in this room, so they all know, and they have been making those phone calls, so.
Perfect, thank you, Mayor. Are there any other questions from the committee? Yes, Councilmember Packerell.
Director Dorman, there are four legislators on this committee right now. Everything has an emergency in it, there is good reason for behind it, but number four, this could have been done without emergency, right? Because this was passed a long time back, and the emergency language.
Well, I mean, it really, we just wasn't, I mean, we felt it was okay. It really wasn't brought up till lately that it needed to change. And honestly, I think the opinions were kind of here or there. I think the ordinance was probably fine as it was, but we literally just went and decided to change it as our Water Department felt it needed to be cleaned up a little bit. Are you talking about the, we're talking about now the water ordinance?
Yes. I'm just thinking why we had to add an emergency, because it was, we have a lot of time in between.
Well, because the rates are in effect now, so we just want to make sure it's cleared up. It's, like I said, it doesn't change any monies, it doesn't, it's not an increase, it's not adding any fees for the city. It's just to clean it up so it's on the books and we can move forward with it. We want to make sure we continue with the rates that we're doing.
Councilmember Pecorrel, I did check with the Water Department. The 10% discount has been given to all bills since January 1, so no one was denied the discount because of this language, but they just really wanted to make complete clarity regarding the 10,000 gallon portion.
Thank you.
Any other questions, concerns? I move we forward this ordinance to counsel for a single read and emergency approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Pecorrel. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This ordinance will be forwarded to counsel for a single read and emergency approval. As there is no further business for the Public Service and Transportation Committee, I return the meeting back to you, President Jenkins.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Finance and Administration Committee. Councilmember Savadi.
Thank you, President Jenkins. This is the Finance and Administration Committee meeting for March 14, 2022. Members in attendance are Councilmember Baker, Councilmember Bryant, Councilmember Strickland, myself, and President Jenkins. First item on the agenda is an ordinance appropriating funds from the Unappropriated General Fund to accounts in the Community Events Department. We're going to have comments from the mayor.
Yes, Chair Savadi, members of council. This is just as we prepare for our 2022 Tomato Festival. We would like to move the funds from the $10,495.57 that were donated last year and transferred to the Community Events Budget so we can continue on our process of getting ready for the Tomato Festival. I had a lot of great sponsors last year and just ready to get right back to work on this year's program.
All right. Are there any questions or comments from the committee on this legislation? From the rest of council?
One, please. Just a couple of quick questions. $10,495, is that the total that was received for the event from donors and sponsors, or is that just part of?
I'd have to follow up with that one. Do you know, Ms. Clemens? That was part, yeah, this is just a part of the funds that were transferred.
So some of it was already put into the other account, just this part wasn't then? Okay. And again, just more small clerical, these really aren't donations, these are sponsor fees as opposed to donations, and so just language is more, they were all charged for this to get their, to get certain levels of packaging and so forth for their sponsorship.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. All right, any other comments, questions? All right. All right, seeing none, I move we forward this ordinance to counsel for a first read. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Strickland. Any last discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries, and that ordinance will be forwarded to council for its first read. Second on the agenda is an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Daimler Group Incorporated for the sale of real property and declaring an emergency. Mayor or attorney? It looks like attorney this time.
I'll go ahead and field it to start. This is a PSA purchase and sale agreement between the City of Reynoldsburg and the Daimler Group. It's a development group for 5.5 to 6 acres on the west side of the property we commonly refer to as across from the cemetery. This was property that we purchased last year. The purchase price would be $190,000 per net acre, depending on how much buildable land they are able to identify after the inspection period on the property. The purpose of this purchase and sale agreement is not just to recoup some of the funds that we expended to buy the property. The purpose is for the developer to construct a commercial building that would be at least 50,000 square feet of medical office space and other uses that are ancillary to medical office space. Cannot disclose at this time the user to council, but it is a reputable user. And I'm here to answer any other questions that council may have. I would note there is a lengthy period of time before closing on this particular transaction, up to 240 days. The developer has not had yet access to the property to conduct their inspection of the property, and they have requested additional time to be able to do that prior to closing. So just wanted to make sure council was aware of that extended period of time.
The intent is to break ground early in 2023 for an opening of the facility sometime late spring, early summer 2024, just to give you the timeframe.
All right, are there any questions for the attorney or mayor from the committee? From the rest of council? Councilmember Cotner?
Thank you. So there's clearly then a plan in place, so you've seen some plans, can't share those yet. I guess my biggest concern about this, though, is in item two where we're saying that the site plan is to be submitted to the mayor and the development director. Are we allowed to do that? I guess as starters, doesn't that take the authority from Planning Commission and put it into different hands?
We're saying that they're required to submit it to the mayor and development director, but we don't bypass the requirements of the zoning code for major site plan approval.
Okay. So then what's this language saying that, I mean, it has to be consistent with the site plan to be submitted to the mayor and the development director for approval? So that goes to them, they would approve it, then the actual site plan still goes to Planning Commission and goes through the process at that point?
Correct.
Okay. And so they still?
The purpose is that because we're the seller on this particular project, ordinarily, when we get a site plan, there's no administrative approval, it still has to go to Planning Commission. On this one, we are adding that additional layer of administrative approval before we will let it go to Planning Commission, because we want to make sure as the seller that the project fits what was expected.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions from the rest of the council?
So Attorney Shook, it's a 200-some-so-many number of days that needs to be for this property, the wait time. Why is that?
That was at the request of the developer, but the primary reason is to give them the opportunity to be able to fully inspect the property, to determine, you know, how they're going to place the building, structure parking on the site, and determine if there's any portion of the site that might be due to wetlands or any other circumstance unbuildable. We don't anticipate those being issues going forward, but we did want to grant the developer in this particular project that kind of flexibility because we're that confident in this developer.
In addition, this, the other section of land that's next to this is also earmarked for the Center East Foundation Facility, so they are, the two groups are actually coordinated in that effort, and so ultimately, what is built on one side has to be able to fit and flow with the others, so there's a lot of coordination for a project of this size.
Any more questions? Seeing none, I will move, I move we forward this ordinance to council for its first read. Do I have a second? Second from Councilmember Bryant. Any last discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries, and this ordinance will be forwarded to council for its first read. And that concludes the business for the Finance and Administration Committee, and I return the meeting to President Jenkins.
Thank you. Next, we have a consent agenda for emergency adoption. Items 11, 1 through 5 are part of a consent agenda. These ordinances stand for a first reading unless someone wants to remove an item for further discussion. Council will move forward with the first reading. Would the clerk please read items 11, 1 through 5?
Madam President, I'm sorry. These stand for emergency adoption, not first reading. That was, that was a typographical error there, so these will be for emergency adoption. Item one, an ordinance to approve the final plan for the Spring Hill Farm Development, Section 3, Parts A and B, and declaring an emergency. Two, an ordinance appropriating unencumbered balances as of December 31, 2021, in various police special revenue funds, providing that revenues for the funds received during 2022 be accepted and declaring an emergency. Three, an ordinance to approve payment of services performed in the prior year and declaring an emergency. Four, an ordinance to amend ordinance 142-2021 regarding Chapter 953, Water Charges, Section 953.01a, Water Rate Schedule of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Reynoldsburg and Declaring an Emergency. And five, an ordinance appropriating unencumbered balances as of December 31, 2021, for the Recovery Court Funds, providing that revenues for funds received during 2022 be accepted and declaring an emergency.
May I have a motion to approve these ordinances? May I have a second? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Cotner?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Bryant?
Aye.
Councilmember Strickland?
Aye.
Councilmember Savadi?
Aye.
Councilmember Pecorrel?
Aye.
And Councilmember Lawson Rowe?
Aye.
These ordinances are approved, seven affirmative votes and no negative votes. Next, we have a consent agenda for a first reading. Items 12, 1 through 7 are part of a consent agenda. These ordinances stand for a first reading unless someone wants to remove an item for further discussion. Council will move forward with a first reading. Would the clerk please read items 12, 1 through 7?
Item one, an ordinance to amend Chapter 11, Planning and Zoning Code for the City of Reynoldsburg, Ohio. Two, an ordinance authorizing the city auditor to remove equipment from the city's fixed asset list for the Reynoldsburg Police Department. Three, an ordinance appropriating funds from the Unappropriated General Fund to the Police Department for donated monies. Four, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for 2022 fireworks display, waive competitive bidding, and declaring an emergency. Five, an ordinance authorizing EMHNT to conduct design, engineering, and bidding services for the Police Department West Parking Lot Lighting Services, appropriate funds therefore, and declaring an emergency. Six, an ordinance appropriating funds from the Unappropriated General Fund to the accounts in the Community Events Department. And seven, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Daimler Group, Inc., for the sale of real property and declaring an emergency.
These ordinances stand for a first reading. Next, we have a consent agenda for a second reading. Items 13, 1 through 6 are part of a consent agenda. These ordinances stand for a second reading unless someone wants to remove an item for further discussion. Council will move forward with a second reading. Would the clerk please read items 13, 1 through 6?
One, an ordinance establishing Section 701.07 of the codified ordinances of the City of Reynoldsburg, commonly referred to as the Pay-to-Stay Ordinance, as amended. Two, an ordinance to establish Section 160.13 Paid Family Leave, the codified ordinances of the City of Reynoldsburg. Three, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with EMHNT for the engineering and management of the 2022 Sewer Line CCTV Manhole Inspection and Cleaning Project. Four, an ordinance to amend Chapter 1305, Permits and Fees, Section 1305.01, Fee Schedule of the Codified Ordinances for the City of Reynoldsburg. Five, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an annual agreement with EMHNT for Geographical Information System, GIS, Maintenance and Support for 2022. Six, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an annual agreement with EMHNT for Web GIS Upgrade Enhancements 2022.
These ordinances stand for a second reading. Next, we have a consent agenda for a third reading. Items 14, 1 through 3 are part of a consent agenda. These ordinances stand for a third reading and approval unless someone wants to remove an item for further discussion. Council will move forward with a vote on these ordinances. Would the clerk please read items 14, 1 through 3?
One, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Martin Painting and Coating Company to paint city streetlight poles and waive competitive bidding. Two, an ordinance authorizing the annual participation in the ODOT's Road Saw Purchasing Contract. Three, an ordinance authorizing the increase of appropriations for the various city JED
May I have a motion to approve these ordinances? Councilmember Bryant, may I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Pecorrel, would the clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Cotner?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Bryant?
Aye.
Councilmember Strickland?
Aye.
Councilmember Savadi?
Aye.
Councilmember Pecorrel?
Aye.
And Councilmember Lawson Rowe?
Aye.
These ordinances are approved, seven affirmative votes and no negative votes. Other council matters. Does anyone on council have any further items that you would like to discuss this evening? Councilmember Strickland?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to let everyone know that I will be here, City Hall, again, every second and fourth Wednesday of the month. This gives you an opportunity to know all things about Reynoldsburg if you have any questions. I will be here between 6:00 and 7:00, so feel free to get in contact with me if you have any questions. So once again, I'll be here every second and fourth Wednesday of the month. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any other items they'd like to discuss? Councilmember Baker?
First, let me get my tradition out to what I want to think. Men and women in military or doctors or nurses who are still helping us through this pandemic, even though it's gotten better, but we're still, we're still there and pushing forward, and all those who continue to work through the pandemic, those that's in the retail and logistic companies and all of them, because they help keep this country moving forward. Second, I want to recognize, there's a young man that wrestles for Reynoldsburg High School named Logan Smiley. He went to state, and so, and competed at state, and so I want to give him a shout-out for a well-done and a great season, because those who wrestle know getting to state and wrestling is not an easy feat. So I want to give him a shout-out, and also a personal shout-out to Amira Russell, who hit 2,000 points in the win over, what was that? Well, the team that we beat for the state. So I want to give her a personal shout-out, because 2,000 points at any level is a remarkable feat. Heck, when I played basketball, I was just hoping to get off the bench. But anyway, so I just want to put that out there.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any items they'd like to discuss? There is a schedule of upcoming council meeting, BZBA and Planning Commission meetings. The next council meeting is scheduled for Monday, March 28, 2022, beginning at 6:30